Yes, tonight, did you give us the intellect, the intestinal fortitude to work in the best interests of the people of our fair city? Through this meeting, as we discuss ways to serve our citizens, please let us be ever mindful that our decisions are to guide Monroe from our immediate future into future generations. If you don't mind, ladies and gentlemen, please remain with your heads bowed for just a couple of moments of silence to honor the memory of D'Angelo Porter, who passed away tragically last week. We ask that you give peace and comfort to his family and friends. As we go from this place, please give us the strength and the wisdom to act in a manner that's pleasing in your sight. We thank you for listening to our prayer. Amen. I'll call this meeting to order of the March 14th, 2023 City Monroe City Council. Let the record reflect that all members of council are present, save Mr. Gregory. Could he join us on the phone?
He is on the phone, yes.
Tyler, are you here?
He's probably on mute.
Now try it. Can you hear us, Tyler?
We're going to pretend that he is on the phone. And Tyler, if you can come through with a question a little bit, great. If something happens and you've dropped off, we'll let the record reflect that as well. I need a motion for the approval of the agenda, please.
He's there. He's there.
Mr. Bailey, I'd like to add to the agenda under number three, under executive session for real estate issue.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Now, I need a motion to approve with change, please.
Submoved.
A motion by Ms. Malcolm. Do we have a second?
Second.
A second by Mr. Little. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, see and file by saying aye. All opposed, like sign. Motion carries, that passes. Moving to the approval of the consent agenda. This is pretty short, council meetings and executive session minutes from last month, planning commission and historic preservation from January. I need a motion for the approval of the consent agenda, please.
No dip, pardon.
A motion by Mr. Little. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Boyce?
Mm-hmm.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye. All opposed, like sign. Motion carries, that passes. Moving to the public forum, we had nobody sign up for comment tonight, but I do want to do the public presentation of the Natural Gas Utility Workers' Day proclamation. We've had, those guys have been running full tilt, so we don't have anyone here, but gentlemen, if you're at home watching on TV or online, this is for you. Proclamation of the Natural Gas Utility Workers' Day. Whereas in 2015, the American Public Gas Association began recognizing March 18th as Natural Gas Utilities Workers' Day, and whereas the date was chosen to remember the New London, Texas school explosion that occurred on March 18th, 1937, leading to the widespread odorization of natural gas and an increased emphasis on safety, and whereas safety is a vital aspect of natural gas distribution and employees of distribution companies endeavor to make natural gas delivery as safe as possible, and whereas the attention and dedication of our utility workers is essential to ensuring the safety of natural gas distribution, and whereas on Natural Gas Utility Workers' Day and throughout the year, we recognize the vital services these workers provide to their communities in the state of Georgia. Now therefore, I, John Howard, Mayor of the City of Monroe, do recognize the day of March 18th, 2023, as Natural Gas Utility Workers' Day, and witness whereof, I have hearing to set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Monroe to be affixed this 14th day of March, the year of our Lord, 2023. Thank you, gentlemen. I appreciate all the work that you do to serve the folks of Monroe. Saying that to the gentlemen, hoping they might be online, and one day we will add a lady to that crew as well. Moving to some business items, we have the city administrator update. Logan, would you proceed, please?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Just recently, we got the full notice to proceed from GDOT for the westbound Onramp. So you'll see GDOT crews mobilize out there at the end of 138 and at 78 in Charlotte Row Boulevard for that project. Eastbound Onramp has been making pretty significant progress, and then Mr. Steele just noted that they hit a pretty significant amount of rock. That'll probably slow that up a little bit, but nevertheless, that project is still going well out there behind the Home Depot area. One other thing I wanted to note, I think I've told most of you, I'm going to try to get together our planning staff and myself, and get with other cities and Walton County planning staff and city managers and county manager, and just work together on a planning retreat so that we're all kind of on the same page countywide as to what's going on in growth and development. Whether or not we agree on each other's take, you know, that's fine. We just need to understand where each other is coming from and how we can all work together in the world of planning, growth, and development.
Perfect. And Logan, I'm going to hold this up if you don't mind. Caitlin sent a copy of this out for the update from Logan late last week with a lot of pictures, a lot of information, so hope you had the opportunity to read it. There's a ton going on that we've addressed over the last several years, but really in the immediate last six months or so. So if you get a chance to review that, that'd be great. Mr. Bailey? The assistant administrative report, please.
Thank you, sir. Couple of things. I had put an update on Facebook today and other social media that we have. A couple of garbage trucks that are down, our side loaders down because of the arm mechanism. One of our rear loaders is having a regeneration issue, so we're a couple hours behind. Some of the late routes might spill over into the early morning of the next day. We'll keep everybody updated. One of the trash trucks did get one of the logos that we have in the Pocket Park downtown, so we got another one of those done on the side. So it's kind of like we're a traveling mural a little bit, one, three of them now. We got great feedback when we met with Cronberg and some of the business owners. They're fans of it, so we've kept doing that. The town green right now, per the meeting this morning, looks like an August completion date. Our terminal building right now is set for completion in May. And then obviously, this coming Saturday, if weather cooperates with us, we will have our car show. Should it have to be rescheduled, it'll be on the following Saturday, the 25th. In that 25th date, we also have Spring on the Green at Childers Park. And then two, there'll be a resolution read later in this meeting for Georgia Cities Week, which is April 23rd through the 29th. We have a community cleanup day, which is a volunteer effort on that 29th. It'll be that Saturday. So if anybody wants to volunteer, join us. By all means, come out. We'll have a couple of different little things to kind of give away and hopefully walk around, go to some neighborhoods, different things like that, parks, cemeteries, and cleanup things. The other thing, real quick, I wanted to, we hosted Fort Oglethorpe from Northwest Georgia here about a week and a half. They're a city that's similar to our size, and they wanted to come visit us because I think at GMA, they were told that we were a good example of where they're at now of how to build your city and your downtown. And I was going to read a card that they had sent back to us, and I know Logan, John had gotten one as well. But this one's written to me, it's kind of, it's for the entire city, though. It's, "Thank you for your hospitality, generosity, and openness when we visited Monroe this week. Not everyone is eager to share their pathways to success, and I'm grateful you were so willing to talk with us and show us how you've transformed your downtown and the city as a whole. And I really love the tour of the city and some of your facilities. You are so proud of your hometown, and it shows. The city is lucky to have you. If you are ever in Northwest Georgia, please stop in for a visit. Thank you and good luck with all the exciting things that you have going on in Monroe." That's a testament to everything we do as a council, as a city. You look around, the staff that we have, we have incredible people that care and that love this town. I mean, so look to your neighbor, look at the person in front of you, behind you. It's every, it's all hands on deck, it's everybody. And then the other little thing I'll tell them, and then I'll shut up, is doctors' visit this past week, there was a doctor from Minnesota that was in Athens with Emily and I. She looked down and saw that I had a city shirt on, and she asked, obviously, if I worked for the city, and I told her, yes. She said every time she comes from Minnesota, and it's only once a quarter, she always makes it a point to come to Monroe and eat here two or three nights a week. So I mean, all the way from Minnesota to downtown Monroe is kind of cool. And just a random happenstance encounter. So just good things. We're never perfect, but we're always moving towards perfection and trying to get better, and that's the key to it. So any questions, I'll be glad to take them.
Thank you, Chris. Are there any questions for Mr. Bailey? Right up big, Chris. Thank you. Chief Watts, purchase of flock camera system.
Thank you, Mayor. Coming to the council tonight to seek approval on the purchase of 10 additional flock camera systems in the amount of 28,500. That will be added to the current 16 cameras that we have in the city. And just to kind of update you real quick on how beneficial the cameras are, tonight, in here for security is Sergeant Brandon Studdard. He actually was patrolling the city last night and got into a vehicle pursuit with an individual that was over on the George Walton Academy campus at 1:00 in the morning. And upon him getting out with him, he took off and fled. It turned into a vehicle pursuit that he went ahead and disregarded the pursuit, got out of it, pulled over, ran the tag information, put it, logged it in in the computer system, put it on the flock camera systems, and within five minutes, Lawrenceville Police Department picked the individual up. So we were able to effectively make the arrest. He was charged with several crimes of possession of methamphetamines and in traffic violations as well. So these cameras are definitely a huge benefit to us, and also the funding for this is going to be coming out of our asset forfeiture account, which is not tax dollars, this is funds that we've seized from people in illegal activity.
That's perfect, Chief. Thank you. Are there any questions?
Move approval.
A motion to approve by Mr. Bradley. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Dickinson. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye. All opposed, like sign. Motion carries, that passes. A utilities purchase of telecom service bucket truck, Mr. Thompson.
Thank you, Mayor. As I discussed with the committee, we had a 2022 and a 2023 CIP item for bucket trucks. We ordered the first one back in February of '22, and we've just, it's basically just arriving. These came in, both of these, one about 28,000 over, and one right at 34,000 over, and I'm sure Ms. Thompson will correct me if I'm wrong. But the other option for this were bucket trucks, they were at 180, 30,000 more than the 154. So we're asking for two approvals, one for a 2022 CIP item at 154, 750, and then the next item, which is the same truck.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson. Are there any questions for Brian? Am I okay just to do this as one motion? I'll entertain a motion to approve the purchase of both of the trucks, please.
Move to approve.
A motion by Mr. Little to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Garrett. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye. All opposed, like sign. Motion carries, that passes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brian. Back to you. Purchase of transformers.
As we've discussed, transformers are hard to get. I'll give you one example that hit me last week. We have a local businessman that's building a car wash in Winder. He ordered his transformer for his car wash in October of last year. His car wash is almost complete, and Georgia Power cannot tell him when the transformer's going to show up. So we've been on point to get every transformer we get our hands on. These are residential transformers on this list. There were 25 total. I would say it's a great price, but it's a great price because they have them. These transformers will be paid for by developers when the development comes through. We got these to make development possible. The total is $97,275.
Thank you, Brian. Are there any questions for Mr. Thompson? I'll entertain a motion, please.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Mr. Garrett. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Little. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye. All opposed, like sign. Motion carries, that passes. Moving to new business, public hearing, Mr. Calendar for zoning ordinance, code text amendment number 15.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Several amendments that are proposed as part of zoning amendment 15 to your zoning ordinance. I'm just going to go down these briefly since this is your public hearing and your first reading of these items. The first is a modification to the table six, which is your industrial land use regulations. Currently, restaurants are prohibited, and you've got several locations in the city where we have restaurants and zoned in one on Spring Street and out there on Highway 78. So this is solving a problem for those and making those permitted by right. You can see, we've carried over all the restaurant categories from the B districts and placed them in the M district, so we've left out the restaurant with walk-up services as permitted use. The other two, drive-through and typical restaurants are listed as permitted by right. And then we're modifying the CBD land use table, and some of this is in response to our interactions with our consultant for our downtown parking study and trying to make downtown a little bit more conducive for residences, allowing for places for like workforce housing and things like that, and enhancing some of the land uses in the district. So the first one, it's kind of hard to see if you can see it, though, we're making a place center, skating rink, bowling alley are used by right as opposed to being prohibited in downtown. Then further down in the CBD section, there's some other uses. So currently, right now, you prohibit commercial parking lots from being in your downtown. We're recommending that to be changed to permitted use, and then we've had, after the planning commission meeting, our expert, Mr. Cronberg, and his review of our ordinance had recommended that we make that a conditional use, and I present to the council tonight that we go with that recommendation to make that an actual conditional use instead of permitted by right. Moving on, we are actually allowing, you can see that you allow accessory apartments, dwellings, apartment houses lost, and single-family dwellings in the downtown CBD. We don't allow apartment buildings or townhouses. This would be the ideal location in the city to allow those types of residences, to be perfectly honest with you. And so we're making a recommendation to those to be, instead of conditional, to be permitted by right. So you currently allow them as a conditional use, but we're going to make them permitted by right. And then Cronberg had made a recommendation that we actually allow the two-family duplex from being prohibited to permitted. This is trying to address some missing middle housing deficiencies within our code. You'll hear that buzzword throughout the year when we deal with some of the other stuff coming up tonight. Further down the list, there, we're making walk-up, walkaway service restaurants allowed by right. And then finally, in the CBD section, we are increasing the building height maximum for 35 feet, which gets you basically a three-story building. In fact, we may have one or two buildings in downtown that already exceed this. We're making that a five-story requirement. If you'll remember the amendment we did to the Pavilion Parkway Plan Pattern Book, or the pattern book for that planned district this past year, we raised that height up to five stories. We're going to recommend the same for the downtown district. And we're also adding residential unit floor areas since we're adding those as by right uses in the CBD, so we can create some minimum standards for those. We initially had proposed that the townhomes be 1,500 square feet. That was based upon the building ground floor area within the district being 750. So Cronberg had recommended that we reduce that minimum to 800 square feet, so we're going to have to add a ground floor minimum of 400 square feet to those if and when there are any projects that come up. We'll have a base standard for a townhome product in the CBD. And then moving on, in your procedural sections, currently, right now, they are kind of misaligned with your COA application requirements. The COAs are 45 days out, and so for the zoning text amendments, zoning map amendments, conditional uses and variances, we're recommending that the lead time for an application prior to planning commission be extended from 30 to 45 days. And that's all the amendments that I proposed, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Brad. Are there any questions for Mr. Calendar?
One question on the, on the building height, you know, the five stories. Is there any limitation on number of feet high, that can be if they're just a five-story building?
Good question. We are, we're trying to eliminate the dimensional standard so there's some flexibility in the story requirement itself, so we are not including an actual foot dimension to that.
Okay. And my question would be the duplex, is that just for downtown or this for the whole city?
Currently, right now, the duplexes are prohibited in downtown. You allow duplexes throughout the city in R2 zoning. So this is, this is actually, the CBD right now prohibits them. We're trying to make them permitted.
Although we have some in the CBD just by right from long ago, correct?
If, I want to say that just in my inventory in my mind, we have no duplexes in downtown, in the CBD as it is.
Probably on the fringes, yeah. I mean, maybe right on the edge.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Any other questions for Brad? Hearing none, I'll declare this portion of the meeting open for public input. Is there anyone here who'd like to speak in favor of the text amendments? Is there anyone here who would like to speak against the text amendments? That's easy enough. I'll declare that portion of the meeting closed, and we'll come back to it in just a couple of minutes. Moving to impact fees, is Marilyn here?
She's not, but I'll just present that. So one thing we were, we had talked about in past planning retreats amongst you all was the possibility of implementing impact fees, whether it be for transportation improvements or utility infrastructure, or parks, or libraries, whatever that is, there's kind of an a la carte menu that you can choose from, but in order to get to that point, we've got to do a full-blown study, and then we have to figure out what these particular costs are down to the penny. And since we've already done so much work with Marilyn Hall, Hall Consulting, through our comp plan, a lot of that hard work's already been done, so now we just kind of dive into the financials and piggyback off of the comp plan. So our recommendation is to engage her and her consulting company in the amount of $45,000, and we'll split that between utilities and general fund. Now, there is a chance after we implement it, we can claw back a good chunk of this $45,000 through the administrative fee component in future years.
Perfect. Thank you. Any questions for Logan? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
Motion to approve by Mr. Dickinson. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Malcolm. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye. All opposed, like sign. Motion carries, that passes. Form-based code, Brad? Did you want to give me a synopsis?
With, this is, we're engaging our consultant to work on basically on the next year to create a form-based code. This will be something that you had indicated you wanted staff to pursue in our planning retreat last year. So we will be engaging this consultant. This is the same consultant that would sit and engage a number of years ago, and we have re-engaged with them to produce a form-based code, and they will address several factors within our zoning ordinance itself and identify some deficiencies and make recommendations. The process will last approximately nine months.
Thank you. And this is something that we did discuss, I think the last time we discussed it, or maybe the first time, was at our retreat.
We've actually discussed it several times, and then we had a special retreat really just for the form-based smart code. So this is, we finally got this agreement together, and here it is. It's Town Planning and Urban Design Collaborative, and again, we used them 10-plus years ago.
They are Franklin, Tennessee.
They are, yeah. So this will be funded out of the ARPA funds as well.
Gotcha. Are there any questions for Logan or Brad?
I know that this has public meetings included and things in it, but do we go into this one with $187,000 predetermined that we will adopt form-based code?
So...
This would be it?
Predetermined, no. I would think, though, going down this road in this exercise, there's some degree of form-based that you would probably adopt to the, to the, I don't think it's going to be a complete rewrite of everything A to Z. It's going to be form-based code elements kind of shoehorned into some of our existing code ordinances. That's probably the best way to put that.
I got a quick question maybe for Beth. I see that money coming out of American Rescue Plan. Do we have a, something written as far as what all of that money is allocated as far as different direction? Or whatever we plan on doing with that money?
Yes, sir. So I'm keeping a schedule of it. Currently, our balance in that fund is $4.1 million. The expenditures that we have essentially set aside, which are, some of them are like the fire pumper that Chief Dykes has on order, some fire equipment, some other things that were in the budget, including these two items. After all is essentially said and done, after those proposed expenditures that are budgeted, our balance in that fund will be essentially 1.4 million.
So do we have a list of everything that we allocated for that money?
I'm sorry.
Do y'all have made out a list of everything that's been allocated for that money? As far as which direction you go on the chart that you're spending whatever amount on?
Yes, yes. So we've got a running tally of everything that you guys have allocated over the past couple of years so far.
Is there, I need to get that list and see what we allocating that money for?
Yes, sir. I can, I can send that out to the full council. I have it updated. I don't have it updated for this month because that bank statement hasn't been, so this will be as of the end of February, so I don't have it for as of March. But no expenditures have been paid out in the month of March, so, but I can send that to y'all.
Are there any other questions or comments?
Go back to my questions for you. So I want to be sure I understood what you just said. This is making an assumption we will go with some type of form-based code in certain areas, but not necessarily a form-based code throughout the city. Is that correct?
You still would have to adopt the elements, right? So if, once they present their findings and their recommendations, it doesn't mean that you have to adopt it. They can still be modified.
So it won't be an entire overhaul?
Could be.
It might be that we, the way I...
Does it have to be? I'm right, I'm sorry, does it have to be an entire overhaul?
It could be that in certain designated areas, we would allow alleyways. It would be certain areas, we might create just one-way streets.
Right.
Is that in my eye?
And so like Marilyn showed in her presentation, some cities apply it citywide. Some cities apply it only to segments of their city. So how far you want to take it is up to you all, okay? So first, we kind of want to engage this firm and see what they dust off and bring back to us, and then secondly, we figure out how far and wide do you want to implement this?
So this firm, though, would get input from staff, from council elected officials, as well as the public, then they'll make recommendations based on that, on all this input?
Yes, sir.
Which may be a portion or maybe all. Okay. I'm just trying to understand.
It's not a full-on form-based unified development code, but it's, it's getting there.
Okay. Mr. Mayor, I move to approve.
Thank you, Mr. Dickinson. You'd have enough of those questions.
It's something I think we need to do, and we've talked about it for years, and we need to...
Thank you. How about a second?
I'll second that.
Second by Ms. Malcolm. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Motion carries, that passes unanimously. Moving to the second reading of the ordinance to amend the official zoning map. Are there any questions regarding the ordinance? Council wishes to have the ordinance read.
We read it last time, didn't we?
We did. I'll entertain a motion, please.
Move to approve.
Thank you, Mr. Dickinson. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Ms. Malcolm. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye. All opposed, like sign. Motion carries, that passes unanimously. Moving to the first reading of the zoning ordinance, code text amendment number 15. Are there any questions regarding this ordinance? I would like to have this read, if you don't mind, please, Paul.
The ordinance to amend the zoning ordinance of City Monroe, Georgia, the mayor and council of City Monroe hereby are, as follows, Article 1, the zoning ordinance of City Monroe officially adopted June 10, 2014... Article 1, the zoning ordinance of City Monroe officially adopted June 10, 2014, effective July 1, 2014, is thereafter amended. Is hereby amended by implementing the text amendments and changes outlined and identified in particular detail on Exhibit A, which such exhibit is incorporated herein by reference. Exhibit A, Amendment Number 15, changes to Section 630.3, Table 6, Industrial Zoning District Land Use Regulations. Changes to Section 646.3, Table 8. Changes to Section 646.6, Table 9, Dimensional Standards for Central Business District Overlay. Changes to Section 1420.4 Sub 2, Zoning Ordinance Text Amendments. Changes to Section 1421.4 Sub 2, Zoning Map Amendments. Changes to Section 1425.1 Sub 1, Conditional Uses. Changes to Section 1430.2 Sub 1, Variances. Article 2, All ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict herewith are hereby repealed. Article 3, These text amendments of the City Monroe Zoning Ordinance shall take effect upon their adoption by the mayor and council. This constitutes the first reading this 14th day of March 2023, Mayor.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate it. We'll have the second reading at our April 11th council meeting. Moving to the resolution of 2022 Budget Amendment. Ms. Thompson?
Thank you, Mayor. Staff recommends the council for approval of the year-end 2022 budget amendments. This is a requirement to ensure compliance with state and federal criteria. These attached year-end budget amendments are to finalize the financial statements and the annual comprehensive financial statements for our auditors. I just want to make a note that not all overages are indicative of being over budget in a negative way. Rather, most overages and all of these overages, most are offset by increased revenues or other funding sources. I had emailed these out earlier, so if y'all have any questions, I'll be glad to answer them.
Thank you, Beth. Are there any questions for Ms. Thompson? Does council wish to have the resolution read? If not, I'll entertain a motion, please.
Move to approve.
Motion to approve by Mr. Little. Is there a second? Second by Ms. Crawford. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign? Motion carries, that passes. Moving to the resolution for Georgia Cities Week, April 23rd through the 29th, Mr. Probst.
As you know, each year, we're one of the cities that likes to participate in Georgia Cities Week, April 23rd to 29th. A lot of times, we do little community events, cleanups and whatnot. And so here we have our standard resolution denoting Georgia Cities Week, celebrated here in Monroe, Georgia.
Are there any questions for Logan? Would you like to have the resolution read?
Yes.
Have the resolution read, please, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a resolution of City Monroe, Georgia, recognizing Georgia Cities Week as April 23rd to 29th, 2023, and encouraging all residents to support the celebration and corresponding activities. Whereas city government is the closest to most citizens and the one with the most direct daily impact upon its residents, and whereas city government is administered for and by its citizens and is dependent upon public commitment to and understanding of its many responsibilities. And whereas city government officials and employees share the responsibility to pass along their understanding of public services and their benefits. And whereas Georgia Cities Week is a very important time to recognize the important role played by city government in our lives. And whereas this week offers an important opportunity to spread the word to all the citizens of Georgia that they can shape and influence this branch of government, which is closest to the people. And whereas the Georgia Municipal Association and its member cities have joined together to teach students and other citizens about municipal government through a variety of different projects and information. And whereas Georgia Cities Week offers an important opportunity to convey to all the citizens of Georgia that they can shape and influence government through their civic involvement. Now therefore be it resolved that the City of Monroe declares April 23rd to 29th, 2023 as Georgia Cities Week. Be it further resolved that the City of Monroe encourages all citizens, city government officials and employees to do everything possible to ensure that this week is recognized and celebrated accordingly. So passed and adopted by the City of Monroe this 14th day of March 2023. That is the resolution, Mayor.
Thank you, Paul. I'll entertain a motion, please.
Move approve.
Motion to approve by Mr. Bradley. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Boyce. Is there any discussion?
Just in the discussion phase, I would hope that we could convey to the citizens of Monroe exactly what this said about the importance of city government and that fact that they can help encourage and shape things. We've looked early about this code that we're talking about doing and getting public engagement. This is where the public can be engaged and do things, support it. So I would encourage hopefully our news media to cover it. And possibly if Mr. Probst or Mayor Howard could do something to get some, maybe a news article that just talks about the things that this resolution says. That this is the time for people to be involved with local government.
Thank you. We'll definitely jump on that on our end. So have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign? Motion carries, that passes. Don't know who wants this one, opioid settlements. Logan, Paul?
Yeah, just briefly, there's a new round of opioid settlements that are out against five of distributors or retailers, five separate settlements. If you remember the Johnson &amp; Johnson, we had a thing last year about the same time, so I don't know if you want to add anything to that, Paul?
Yeah, that's pretty much it. If you go to the website, you can look at everything, but essentially the state of Georgia has opted into the settlement of these five, Tiva, Allergan, CVS, Walgreens and Walmart. They are nearly identical settlements to the two that we had last year, which was the distributor settlement and the Janson &amp; Jansen and J&amp;J settlements. Same gig, will be getting money over a period of time based upon the settlements. You must accept these as is. There are no modifications to opt-in, and the acceptance is due April the 18th. And my office will work, I know that Beth is already earmarking, we've already gotten some of the money in from last year's program. And these funds have to be earmarked for opioid remediation. And we're going to work with Beth's office to make sure that those funds are allocated appropriately to that. As we said last year, the majority of the funds probably will end up being used in the public safety side because that's where the city comes in contact most with systemic problems from the opioid addiction issues. But you need to accept these or approve it if you want to participate, and you need to do it tonight, or you could do it next month. And then once y'all approve them, then we'll just get the mayor to sign, we'll submit the forms, and then Ms. Thompson will be set up to get structured to start receiving the money. And the money comes over a long period of time. Some of them come in over three years. Some of them have payouts over 20 years, but they can pay them early if they want to. And it's going to end up being a chunk of money for you guys over the long haul. I mean, it's not like millions, but it's a few hundred thousand dollars that'll be coming in the door to the City of Monroe through this. Now you'll have a total of seven settlements in the door for you.
Thank you, Mr. Rosenthal. Any questions for Paul? I'll entertain a motion?
Move to approve.
A motion by Mr. Dickinson to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Garrett. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign? Motion carries, that passes. Moving to district items. Ms. Malcolm?
I don't really think I know of anything.
Thank you. Ms. Crawford? Mr. Boyce?
Just got a couple of calls about needing more streetlights on Plaza Trace.
Plaza Trace?
I think it's Plaza Trace, yeah.
And? And let his basketball team to the finals.
Yeah, got to the finals.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
I saw the picture. It's pretty animated. Mr. Bradley?
I have two items, neither of which are district items, but the city as a whole. The first one's, I don't think we can let the council meeting go by without talking about the Walton Tribune's Best Of that they just published last week or in the last issue, the Best of Things in Walton County. And if I remember correctly from that, I think the the voted on, citizens voted on the best law enforcement officer throughout this county, and that was Chief Watts. And we appreciate, you know, that honor. Best elected official throughout Walton County was Mayor Howard.
Thank you.
Which we appreciate. And the best municipal employee voted on throughout Walton County was Mr. Middlebrooke. So City of Monroe came out very well on that, and I think I'll give all those people a hand.
Thank you, Larry.
The second item I had is, I just wanted to bring up something to the council, maybe for you, the discussion tonight or some discussion later on. I have for several months been concerned about the example sometimes that the city sets forth as it becomes things about substance abuse, particularly alcohol abuse. And I guess I'll focus on the alcohol side now, is I know, you know, on an ongoing basis, you see things where alcohol abuse or, you know, people over-invibing in alcohol have caused numerous problems. Whether it's family issues that come up, or whether it's people, accidents happening, you know, the trauma we saw from the University of Georgia students and staff recently because of alcohol with a couple of people being killed brought that to many people's attention. But I think that as I look at this and I think about what is the city's role in this? And I, and we've had some things that I've noticed recently that just bother me that I think we have to be careful as a city that we're not either directly or indirectly promoting the use of alcohol. I think either way that we'll be out of that. There was a, in the DDA newsletter, the online media news, social media newsletter, two, three, four months ago, there was an ad in there for one of the local restaurants. And I understand they take ads and, you know, the local restaurants put things in. This particular one was highlighting the drink specials. It advertised the drink was tequila that will knock your pants off. Well, to me, that's crude, demeaning to women. It's just not the kind of thing that needs to be published. Certainly doesn't need to be published in something that the city provides. Even though it was an ad, I think the city needs to have some way to control that, to not have those kind of ads. This past week was, again, in social media from the city was promoting Georgia Beer Day. Again, I don't think that's a proper function of the city government to be promoting things, use of alcohol. I was noticing just a couple of weeks ago in the AJC in Atlanta had a thing, it said, our CDC estimates that excessive drinking is responsible for about 4,000 deaths in Georgia each year, including nearly one in four total deaths among 20 to 34-year-olds. Excessive drinking also cost Georgia $6.9 billion, with $2 and $5 paid by the government. So not here trying to promote, you know, going back to prohibition or anything. Mine is whether the city directly or indirectly promotes it, and I would hope we wouldn't. I would hope to work with city attorney sometime in the next few weeks to bring back to the council some type of legislation that would say that we don't advertise alcohol, alcohol drinks, that the city doesn't. I think we need to take that out. I think we also need to look at what we're doing otherwise. For example, I would like to see us not allow alcohol sales as city-sponsored events on city property, such as the concerts, which we today, you know, we allow the sale of alcoholic beverages at the concerts. I don't think we should, so I would hope to put that in. And the third part of that is, I look back at an ordinance we passed sometime earlier about the entertainment district downtown. And the entertainment district allows people to take drinks from one business establishment to another, and you can, you know, walk down the streets with your alcoholic drink. Number one, I don't think it should be allowed. I'd like to see us reverse that ordinance. In the event we can't, don't feel we should reverse the ordinance. The other part of that is, when they're walking down the street drinking alcoholic beverages, they're drinking out of a cup with the Monroe brand on the cup. I think that's also something we should not be doing. We shouldn't brand something from the City of Monroe for alcoholic beverages. I bring it up now, again, I want to bring it up later with firm legislation, but I would like to hear if anybody's got any other comments on that.
The city voted for Monroe to be a drinking city. You know that, don't you?
Excuse me?
They voted for them people to be able to drink out in open as long as it's a clear container.
And I don't agree with that, so I'd like to see us reverse.
That's what the city voted for.
I agree. This council voted for it.
Absolutely.
And I want to see us reverse that. But I'm willing to listen if people disagree. Or have any other comments?
Because I do know that people come to Monroe, and I saw this from a friend I'd asked and posted, if you want to be able to drink openly, go to Monroe. And this went about a few days ago. I actually saw that text message that they were sharing with different people that Monroe is an openly drinking city, that if you go down there, you basically can drink all the beer you want as long as you got a clear container. And we actually voted for that a few years back. So Larry actually noticed, and this is what he basically trying to address. I don't drink, so I don't, ain't a real concern, but I think it's something we need to actually look into. I'm kind of behind Larry as far as what they labeling Monroe as as far as an openly drinking city. People are coming from different city to be able to do this stuff openly. And at some point, I got to think that anybody that feel like they can drink like that, at some point, they're going to be intoxicated. But what I've noticed is nobody seemed to be saying nobody getting arrested for drinking or drinking and driving. So I definitely think it's something that need to be looked into. So I'm supportive of what Larry is saying that we need to really dial back and look into some of this stuff that we don't voted on in the past that may not be as helpful as we may think it be, should be, as far as the drinking situation.
Well, if I might, I'm going to take sort of the opposite position on this. First, we're not doing anything that's out of the ordinary. Second, certainly don't think we've turned Monroe into Bourbon Street in New Orleans. I think, Mr. Garrett, your point about there haven't been arrests illustrates that what we're doing is not being abused and that citizens and visitors who choose to have the to-go cups are not getting sloppy drunk and behaving improperly. I have a downtown business. We have the to-go cups. People come in, they take them out. We're very careful in our alcohol sales. Alcohol license is in my name, so I make sure my people are very vigilant about not over-serving, about carding people that might be underage. And in the whole time we've had that restaurant, I've only had one incident when I was in there where I had to approach a customer who seemed to be getting a little out of hand and told him, you know, you can either go with your friends and go home because you're done, or you can leave here in handcuffs. I have no tolerance for misbehavior, but I don't think that we punish people who aren't misbehaving just on the speculation that somebody might. If somebody can show me that we've had some, you know, real serious problem from it, that's a different thing, but I don't think we have. Obviously, there are people who abuse alcohol and other substances, and those people shouldn't even drink. But it is not, in my opinion, the position of this body to get into, you know, those social issues now to deal with that. And finally, the thing about, does the city control advertising? I guess we have a right to control advertising in a publication that we do, but you have to be very careful about violating the First Amendment and starting to dissect certain ads from certain types of businesses and to say what you can and cannot publish. I just don't think that's very wise because you're going to run into a real problem with it, I think. So I don't think it's broken, and I don't see a need right now to fix it. I'm certainly willing to have a discussion about it with the council, with the DDA and with citizens and business owners and so forth. So I'm not opposed to a discussion, but I am opposed to making any sort of changes to what we have in place.
Thank you, Mr. Dickinson. Were there any others who would like to address that?
Just one other comment on what was here. I guess my point on the drinking on the street is I see no benefit to the city for allowing it, and I think it sets a poor example to the youth. allowing it, and I think it sets a poor example to the youth of our city. And I think that's where I come from, is that is, I think it sets a poor example. So that's all.
Thank you, Larry. Norman?
Don't have anything.
Did Tyler ever buzz in? Tyler, you there? We're going to count him as absent.
Yeah, I thought I'm here voting, so that's why I wondered if he was still on line.
Mr. Little?
Hi, I'm here.
Oh, okay.
Hey, you have anything, Tyler?
No, thank you. Sorry, I'm in a precarious situation here.
That's understandable. Good luck, good luck. Mr. Dickens, anything else?
No, sir.
I have a few things. Congratulations to just about all of our local basketball teams. Monroe area boys won region, George Walton boys won region, Walnut Grove, which is made up a bunch of kids from Monroe, won region, and we'll even congratulate Social Circle as well, they won region. George Walton girls just won their first state title ever, so they'll be at the Capitol next week with Bruce Williamson getting congratulatory messages from the State House. March 25th, we have a habitat house under construction for those who'd like to volunteer. I think I've got you on the list, right, Norman?
I'll be there.
Who else? Please, please bring your friends. That also, that day is Child Abuse Prevention Month. They'll be doing the pinwheels wherever Ms. Gregory tells us. So we'll take a little break right at lunch and go do that.
What was that date again?
March 25th, next Saturday. Don't forget the car show this Saturday, and the community cleanup is April 29th. So I hope you'll all bring friends or teams. We've generally had a good turnout for that. I think Chris has Kona Ice coming? If Kona Ice coming that day, or we work something out? Okay. Perfect, thank you, 16 volunteers. We do have a need to go into executive session, so I need a motion to adjourn to executive session, please.
I'm moved.
Motion by Ms. Malcolm, second by Mr. Garrett. All in favor, signify by saying aye. All opposed, like sign. Motion carries, that passes. We'll adjourn to executive session.